Good evening. At seven o'clock, and I would like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Monday, October 13th. If we could all stand, please, and face the flag to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now that we've called the meeting to order, on the pledge, if we could have roll call, please.
Certainly. Member Allen, absent. Member Creel?
Here.
Krug?
Here.
McDonald's, absent. Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
And Chair McAlpine?
Here.
And I will go ahead and call up both alternates, Branch and Benedict. I'll go ahead.
You guys can come forward and take a seat. We'll get your names, the name tags replaced. Okay, so we do have a quorum present for this evening's meeting, so we can proceed to approving the agenda that was present, that is available on the table, as well as was included in our packet. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Support?
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda for the Monday, October 10th, 2025, meeting of the zoning board of appeals, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the agenda has been approved. Next up, our last meeting was on August 11th, 2025. We do need to approve the minutes from that meeting. They were included in our packet as well. I will either entertain a motion, or we can discuss any changes or additions that need to be made to those minutes before we approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support that.
All right. All in favor of approving our meeting minutes from Monday, August 11th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
I wasn't present, so I should abstain from the...
Yes, right, correct.
From the vote.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so the, even with that, and Mr. Willner abstaining, we still have, the meeting minutes have been approved. Next up would be new business. We don't have any this evening to discuss. So we'll move forward to our first application, which is PBA 0725, F&amp;L Berkeley LLC, located at 2114 11 Mile Road, parcel 042517358017, located on the north side of 11 Mile Road between Berkeley Avenue and Henley. They are requesting a variance on the required front setback for pump islands per 8.05.c.1. Ms. Anderson, if you could give us some background on the request?
Certainly. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance of 14 feet on the required front setback for pump islands per zoning ordinance 138 8.05.c.1. Per the Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Zoning Article 8, Section 8.05.c.1, automotive uses, setback, pump island, front setback requirement is 30 feet. The board has been provided the history on 2114 11 Mile, on the previous permitted and not permitted uses, in regards to applying for a use variance with the zoning board of appeals, and denied in 2024. Since the use variance denial, the zoning district has changed as of April 16th, 2025, to flex, and the use is permitted with the special land use approval. The planning commission recommended approval August 26th, 2025, and city council approved the recommended special land use for 2114 11 Mile on September 8th, 2025, with the conditions of the ZBA granting a variance for the location of the pump islands. The zoning district flex does allow a use of a gas station as a special land use approval. The existing pump stations are at 16 feet rather than the required 30 feet for the front setback. The pump stations appear to have been in this location since early as 1963. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138-17.04 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property, and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approval and denial were in your packets.
Thank you. Does anyone, any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for Ms. Anderson, based upon what she just provided us? Yes, Mr. Willner?
I have a question, and I'm sure it was approved by city council, but it's just weird that in the city council notes that were attached, it doesn't say approved. It just says matter of considering, when all the other ones, like, say approving, approving, approving.
Yeah, so when they do the council, when they do the, you know, the agenda, it's all motions to approve whatever is on that agenda, and the motion was to approve that. I mean, Mr. Henning, you might be able to clarify that a little bit more better for that?
Yeah, I was the maker of the motion. That's actually very good observation. Those minutes aren't exactly correct, because we did correct it to, the latter part of it's correct, that we use the findings of fact from the planning commission to approve the motion.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
And so the, the use, the, from the last time we heard this, the change, it has changed, the use district has changed?
Yeah, the zoning district, and before it was 11 Mile District, where only the service station was a permitted use, where the gas station had lost its non-conformity. So now, as of April, it is now in the flex district. A gas station is allowed under a special land use approval, and I believe one of the conditions in the, they, it's not going to be a service station at this time, it's just going to be the gas station and a convenience store.
All right, thanks.
Okay, yes, Ms. Sarah?
Do you have any, do you have any logic behind why the 30 feet as opposed to the 16? Is there, are there safety concerns, or what would be the reasoning for having the 30 feet?
That is a good question. In the current design standards, it's the 30 feet. As I had indicated, these pumps have been there since, you know, the 50s. Most likely throughout the, from the 50s to now, in regards to the design standards, they've decided to push them back further.
And that 16 feet does include the sidewalk, then, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question. Is there any, are there any safety considerations that we need to be aware of, given the fact that we're, we are, they're 14 feet shy of what we require?
In the report that, from the, when Kristen did the packet for the planning commission, if there was any safety concerns or anything, that would have been brought up to the planning commission at that point. There was no concerns as far as safety yet. You know, that was presented to the planning commission before they did their recommendation.
They recommended we approve the variance, correct?
They recommended approval on the special land use, but it was based on their approval is with the recommendation that the special land use approval, as far as the use is allowed, that the variance would have to be granted by the zoning board of appeals for the location of the pumps.
Right, but page three, part one here, says the planning commission recommends the variance be approved. That is the recommendation to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there any other gas stations in Berkeley that have similar non-conforming setbacks? I'm thinking of...
A few of them. I drove at the other stations, and I don't think...
The BP, maybe at Catalpa and Coolidge?
Right, that one does not. The Marathon on 12 Mile does not. They're all right at the sidewalk.
Okay. So anything new going in would have to comply with the 30 feet, as the, you know, the one that's going to be going at 12 and Greenfield, they have to go to the new design standards.
Okay.
Is the 30 feet from our most recent ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Thomas? Okay, so before we proceed, once again, we need to, in order to approve the variance, or to, whether or not we approve or deny the variance, the request, we need to take into consideration the following five items. The need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as the other property owners. And the fifth one is the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. So at this point, I will ask that the petitioner come forward, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Fadi Qaji, and my address is 761 Nissan Court, Wexon, Michigan, 48393.
So if you can just tell us why, what you're requesting today, and the reason, please?
So, we purchased this gas station about three years ago, and we were not aware of the condition of the zoning that had been changed. And we prepared it, we spent over a quarter million dollar underground, and we got an approval from the state, and when we come to try to open it, it was denied. The zoning has changed, and we are seeking to bring it back and open it as a gas station. We are in the gas station business, we're not in the mechanic shop business, and we've been paying payments and taxes on it. And we're just, we have a family, and we're trying to open it.
Okay, so you need to explain to us why you need the variance, what the, what is the basis of the request, please?
So, the reason we need the variance, because the pump is 16 feet from the property line, and that all require 30 feet, and those, everything in there is existing. We are not changing anything, so we're seeking the variance, so we don't touch anything. Everything will stay the way it is.
Okay, and then just, any questions? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sarah?
Have you looked at reconfiguring where the pumps are, or is that cost prohibitive? How, have you thought about making any changes to where the pumps are currently located?
So, to, to move the pumps from where they belong right now, the property can have only one pump, because the tanks are located at a certain spot, so the pumps cannot be put up on top of the tanks, because the thing, the concrete has to be acceptable all the time.
Okay, thank you.
It's not even a cost thing, it's a, it's logistically impossible on that particular piece of property.
It's impossible.
It's your understanding.
As beside of when you dig in, all the environmental issues is going to come out.
Right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Creel, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I will ask if there is anyone from the public who wishes to come up and speak on this matter. If you do, if you could please come up, state your name and address for the record, and share your thoughts with us on the request for the variance, please. Seeing no one has come forward, and we do not have any correspondence...
Correct.
I will go ahead and close the portion of the public meeting, and open it back up to my fellow commissioners for discussion for a motion. Mr. Willner?
I mean, in light of the, the use change, I mean, you know, that was the reason it didn't get approved last time, so in light of that, and it was existing, and those pumps were there, you know, I don't see an issue with it. You know, they were there, functioning, no safety issues, you know, for however many years, but...
Okay, so are you prepared to make a motion?
I mean, nobody has...
And if there's no other discussion?
Nobody has anything to say?
Yep. So based upon the criteria that we read earlier, there is, there are, it does meet the conditions for approval. So the variance would be the unique circumstances, it's not the result of the property owner, it would be burdensome, and it would render the property unusable, and it's the minimum variance that we would need. In addition, I think that's important to notice, there are no potential safety issues as well, so...
Right.
You good?
Yeah, I mean, I would take into account whatever the planning commission or zoning, or the city council recommended, there were some things they recommended, that those are also incorporated.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Willner. Do we have a support, please?
I support.
Mr. Krug? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Branch?
Uh, yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member Benedict?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes, so your motion for the variance to, for the setback has been approved.
Good luck to you.
Okay, so next up is application PBA 10-25, Donald and Virginia Venzel at 3978 Kenmore Road, parcel 042507434040, located on the east side of Kenmore between Edwards and Morrison. They are requesting a two-point, a two-feet-six-inch dimensional variance to an accessory structure side yard that requires a five-foot setback. If you could go ahead and share with us the findings of the case, please?
Yes. I have some pictures that were provided for this case. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance of 2.6 feet on the required side yard setback of an open-air accessory structure. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Zoning, Article 9, Section 9.15. A. Point 2 setbacks. The structures must be located in a manner to meet the required setbacks and locations for an accessory structure, however the structures do not require separation distance from the principal structures or swing pool. The board has been provided the history of 3978 Kenmore on the lot combination, and permits issued for the construction of a new garage and demolition of the existing garage. The applicant would like to convert the original garage that was to be torn down into an open-air covered patio accessory structure that has a side yard setback of 2.4 feet rather than the five feet unless properly fire separation has been installed for 9.15.A2 and 9.09.A.5B. For a variance to be approved, the zoning board of appeals, it should meet the standards of Section 138-17.04 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property, and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approval and denial have been included in your packets for your convenience.
Okay, and Ms. Sarah, if you'd like to, she approached me before the meeting started and would like to, yes?
I had, just for disclosure purposes, I had a brief conversation with the immediate neighbor to the north of the location. We did not go into depth about it. She expressed her opinion, and that was basically the end of the discussion, so...
Can you tell us what her opinion was?
Did she submit, she didn't submit anything? No, but she is in the audience today.
Okay, so she'll be able to speak?
Okay, perfect, so you can speak.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay, so you're okay with me stating?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so open it up to discussion. Does anyone have any comments or questions, Ms. Anderson? Seeing none, I would ask that the petitioner come forward. If you can, please state your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about why you need the variance, please.
Don Venzel at 3978 Kenmore in Berkeley. We're just shy of 60-year residence in the city. We're not trying to, you know, buck the rules, just trying to kind of have an outdoor gazebo kind of thing, and the garage has already been there since, the old garage. We built a new garage, and we have the double lot where we had to combine it in order to build the garage, and under the conditions that we would remove the other garage. Well, we'd like to, we can't keep the other garage in its existing form, but we would like to be able to make a little outdoor seating area to make it more useful, and keep from getting hit by acorns and stuff, and we'd like to ask the city if we can have a variance for that, to put that in.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Sarah, sorry?
Do you have any other seating area or patio area behind your house already?
There is a little one, yes.
Okay.
So part of the, oh, you...
I'll go to Mr. Krug, and then what do you miss?
Okay, go ahead.
Part of the requirements, when you were granted the permit to build the new garage, that you were going to demolish the old garage, right? So why, why was that never done?
I really don't have a good excuse, just I didn't, we were using it at the time, and we had put some lambs beams, we knocked a couple walls out while we were doing the other garage, just to be able to use it, and I'm actually pretty negligent about that, about not tearing it down right away, because we were using it at the time. We were trying to use the back half of the original garage as a shed for bikes and mowers and stuff like that, but Kim said that we exceeded the amount of square footage that you're allowed. I think it's 800 square feet?
Correct.
And we were like 70 feet more than we were allowed, so we thought, well, we'll try to save that then, and by tearing the walls out and making a kind of a, an eating area, kind of a hangout area. Because the slab's already there, it's going to be there if we have to tear it down, so we'd like to make it of a better usage for us, for the family.
If you're, if you're going to speak, I need you to come forward, state your name and address, please.
Virginia Venzel, Don's wife.
Could you just state your address, please?
Yes, 3978 Kenmore.
Thank you.
I think part of it was like, oh, why are we going to tear this down? We've got this great roof, and it's a sitting area, and basically if we had to tear it down, we would put up another covered area, and it probably wouldn't be as nice, just because it would cost money. You know, we'd probably go to Costco or something and get some kind of roof, but, you know, we have a very tree backyard, and we're fair people, so we sit out in there. I think what we realized is, this is where we want to sit. You know, initially, I think he was, we were just worried about getting a garage in the back and getting all that work done, and then it came to be like, whoa, wait a minute, this is the great use. It's by the house, it's covered, so we think it'll add to it, but, so I think that was part of why we didn't do it right away, because we kind of started using it.
Okay, do you have any questions, petitioner? Yes, Ms. Sarah?
Do you have any plans to change the, the look of the, the structure?
Yes, yeah, but I didn't want to submit any kind of plans until we were able to get permission to even do anything. So I thought the step, first step would be to find out if we can get permission to do that, and if we can't, and then go with the, pull a permit to submit, you know, because I'd like to strengthen it up, you know. Went and looked at the one in Bacon Park, and it's fabulous. I mean, it's, they did a great job. We'd like to do something that's, you know, that's stronger than what we have there now, that's, we haven't done any wind shear things or anything like that, because we wanted to make sure we got past the variants first. But we will pull a permit for, when we decide what we're going to do, and once we've done all our homework on that, but I thought this was the first step before we even go any further.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? If not, I will close this portion, and I will open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, if you could please come forward, state your name and your address, and share your thoughts on this request, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Gunup. I'm the neighbors of Don and Venzel. They're, the structure they're referring to is right on my prop...
Could you just put your address, please?
Excuse me, what?
Your address, please.
It's 3992 Kenmore.
Thank you.
Right next door to Don and Virginia, and the structure they're referring to sits almost right on my property line. That garage has been there probably since 1950, at least, maybe before then, was put up by the previous owner, and she was the original owner of that house. Grace, I can't remember her last name, but when she left that property, she was 95 when she, when she left, and Don and Virginia bought it, and I've been real happy they moved in, because they didn't build on or up or, or anything. So, so I still have a good view from my house, and we have a double lot, so it's kind of nice back there. And I kind of like it when they sit underneath that little gazebo garage, because if they sit out in the, in their driveway, I have a back porch that's right there, right at the back of the house, of my house, and I always feel like I'm in the middle of their conversation all the time. So when they sit in their little gazebo thing, then I don't feel like I'm right in the middle of it all the time. Plus, it shields them from acorns dropping from the trees, and sometimes I feel like you got to sit under there with a baseball hat on, because you're getting bummed, murdered by nuts all the time, because we have a lot of oak trees. So I kind of like that garage being there. It's been there so, so way before my time.
Okay.
So anyway, that's my two cents to support them.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, and share your thoughts, please.
Hello, Dave Kalish, 3964 Kenmore. I am the neighbor directly to the south of them. I am here as well to support. Couple things. First, you asked if there was already a place to sit out there. It's really their driveway that they're sitting in, and that's what she was talking about. So they're, they're basically sitting in their driveway while she's in her driveway, so I get it. Second, to address, you know, while they were building the new garage, they did a great job of keeping all their stuff covered and out of the, you know, we have kids in our yard and everything, and just, it wasn't a big mess. It did, they did a great job with that, and I can see why they would have kept that area as a shed, maybe a little bit too long, I guess, for his, whereas not mine, but it ended up working out for us as neighbors from a view. And lastly, to second on what she said, when Don and Virginia moved in, I was... I was there also with the old neighbor, Grace. She'd been there a long time, and they came in and really beautified the property up, and they've done a great job keeping it very nice in there. And for that, we appreciate the support. And lastly, I will say the same. It's been, it's nice to see them back there, under their gazebo, and, you know, with their family, their grandkids, in an area to sit with everybody as well in a covered spot. And that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening. Okay, seeing as there are no one else from the public, and we do not have any additional correspondence.
Correct.
I will close the portion of the public hearing, and I will open it back up to my commissioners for discussion. Before we do start the discussion, I just want to remind everyone of the standards for review. The need for the variance due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owners from using the property for permitted purpose or surrender conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners, and the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding property. So, I'll go ahead and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion. Anyone like to speak, questions, discussion? Mr. Benedict?
Yeah, I'm a little stuck on conditions B and D. B is that this isn't a situation that was created by the property owner or the previous owner. You know, if they had torn this down as they had agreed to, this would not have been the issue. Also, with regard to condition D, adjusting the existing structure is also an option as opposed to what is built. So, for that reason, I'm not sure if this meets the requirements of B or D.
I would have to agree with you as well, Mr. Willner?
So, and this may be for Ms. Anderson, would they have been granted a permit to take, to build the new garage? Without the condition of being a little one?
No, because the new garage, the square footage was 717, and the existing garage puts it over the allowed 800 square foot maximum on a property as far as your accessory structures. So, they were, the permit was issued with the condition that the existing garage be torn down, they were able to use it for storage. The new constructed garage, that one hasn't been final approved yet. No, no.
It's going to go in the same location, though?
Mr. Creel?
No, the new garage was put further back east, closer to Coolidge, because they have on Coolidge, with the long yards. So, it was put to the far east end of the building of the property towards Coolidge.
So, if the permit's a couple years old, I mean, why would it never be finalized?
Uh, because of the demo not being completed, and...
Is that the only outstanding issue?
Uh, there is one other thing that they, the building official needs to check on the staircase, the stairs inside.
Yeah, the correspondence has been, kept trying to get them to complete.
Yeah, I mean, there's a letter from the building official where they, you know, they had expressed concerns. You know, they've torn apart the structure, and they're using it for something it wasn't intended to use, or, you know, they moved, the neighbor moved, they might be fine with it now, but, you know, they're not meeting the setback. And it would follow through, so it would carry with the sale. So, they would always be allowed to have that structure there. I mean, I don't think, I don't think it should be allowed.
Yeah, I would say, Ms. Seer, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Krug.
I'd have to agree with you guys also on that.
Specifically B and D?
Exactly.
Mr. Creel?
So, if we deny this, then they have to tear it down, or they...
Yes, they would have to tear it down. Now, they could always put up, you know, different structure, you know, prefabricated, or build a different open-air gazebo five feet from the side setback.
Okay, so hypothetically, they could, they would have to tear it down, and they could put up the exact same structure two and a half feet further in from the property?
With the, there's no fire rating on this currently, and with no walls, there's, if you look at the concerns from the building official as far as fire windshield, and, you know, it's a structure that's being totally modified.
I understand.
So...
Are they being issued right now, like, tickets from the city for...
We have not issued any tickets, just code violations in regards to the expired permits.
I mean, it looks like the permits have been expired for years.
We've been working, yeah, we've been working with them.
So, once again, just to recap, they were allowed to build a new garage with the condition that the old garage be removed. So, they full well knew that this was going to happen. They obviously have since decided that they like this, but that does still not allow them the authority, the ability to have that second garage up, because it should have been taken down.
The sec, yes, the original garage should have been taken down, you know, but with the, they're modifying it rather than it being a closed accessory structure, wanting to do it as like an open-air accessory structure. But an open-air accessory structure is to be five feet from the side setbacks.
So, just to add on to that, so had they built the second garage, taken down the first garage as they were supposed to do, they could have come in front of us to build some type of gazebo if they needed to for that variance, and that would be another case. Or they could have built it within that five feet and not been in front of us.
Correct, if they did it within the, you know, outside of the five-foot side setback, they would not have to come for a variance.
So, this is basically, unfortunately, we're sometimes in difficult situations, but this is basically a situation where the homeowner is putting us in a position to determine whether or not this meets the criteria. And unfortunately, we all know that the house and the new garage can be used in its condition today. That if we told them to take it down, unfortunately, they would lose that, that space that they have, but that's basically their choice, is what it's coming down to, to have that.
As far as losing the space of the original location?
Well, it's their choice right now to have the space, that doesn't mean it's allowed, but...
Correct, yeah. Was not allowed to be there, yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Can I have one more thing, please?
Um, no, I'm sorry, the public part of this is closed. That's okay, no, that's okay.
I just wanted to say that we're going to go on that structure.
Okay, well, unfortunately, in situations like this, like I said, the public portion is closed, but there are plenty of times that if you don't come and do the proper process and you invest the money, that's at your expense. And sometimes we've had to make some difficult decisions, not decisions we want, but we do have five criteria that we have to meet for this, and our guidelines are very strict. Any other comments or questions? Anyone ready to make a motion?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead, please.
In a matter of PBA 1025, 3978 Kenmore Road, parcel 042507434040, motion to deny the requested dimensional variance from Section 138-915A2 of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to grant a dimensional variance of 2.6 feet under Section 138-915A2 that does not conform to applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners, and the requested variance is not the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners.
I support that.
Okay, we have a support and a motion. Can I just ask one thing, I'm sorry, before we take, is there any kind of time limit or any kind of, I guess, requirement as far as if we do deny this request, what their next steps would be and how quickly they should, they should get the garage removed?
Uh, the building official and I will, if it is denied, will communicate in regards to the, in regards to the, already the enforcements that have been sent out for a compliance date. One thing I do want to ask in regards to the denial, basically, just on pertaining to the denial, you only need to choose one, you choose a couple, and one of them as far as if you give like a definitive reason of that standard that follows the denial.
Okay. Can I keep just the first?
Which, yeah.
Yeah.
Adam B is the most appropriate.
So, A, the need for the variance is due to unique, is being denied because it does not meet unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, is that the one?
No, Adam B.
Oh, B, I'm sorry, okay.
The result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners.
Okay.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, that's the reason where the motion is in front of us. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Member Creel?
I support the motion as written.
Member Krug?
Uh, yes.
Member Benedict?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Branch?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Fortunately, the motion is denied.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is other business?
Uh, no other business.
Okay, so next up is the staff board member report.
Uh, so in your report, you had the July and August monthly reports, and in regards to next month's meeting, there possibly may be a meeting. The deadline for the November meeting was this past Friday. There has been an application, but not all correspondence is there to proceed with it at this time. So, depending on if I get all that correspondence in time for a notice to go out, there may be a November meeting. So, I will definitely keep you posted and let you know on that.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's all I have.
Okay, next up is the liaison report, Councilman Henanen. Anything to share with us this evening?
Yeah, one observation I'm going to take as an action item for tonight is to look at the setback for pumps. If we approved one and found it, you know, not objectionable and safe, and most or all of our other existing pumps are in the same format, and we generally have shallow lots, we probably shouldn't have a zoning ordinance that makes most or all of what we already have nonconforming. So, I'm going to take that as an action item to look into that. Recently, council passed a couple of ordinances to clean up some of the minor discrepancies and some clarifications in the recently passed zoning ordinance rewrite. So, just, we expected there would be some cleanup. There's going to be a little bit more, but we think we've gotten most of it. And then, the city's been negotiating with the developer of the Columbia Apartments to, the negotiations provide tax incentives in exchange for all 51 of the apartments to be attainable, meaning that the average person in Berkeley would be able to afford the rent there. And that is tentatively scheduled for a vote at our next meeting on October 20th. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and make a comment? Seeing as there are, there is no one who, in the audience who would like to come forward, I'd like to make a mo, I would like, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:41 this evening. If I could have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Krug, support?
I'll support it.
Ms. Seer, okay, all in favor of adjourning the Monday, October 13th, 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to stay longer? Thank you very much.
Wouldn't flip that way?
No.